We'll call the Wilmer City Council to order on Monday, February 5th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantus.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Plowman. Fagerly. Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I would like to add the position of cable access technician. Request to increase that to a full-time equivalent and update the job description. Anything else? To undertake a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So moved. Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda and amend it. Cable access technician, Mr. Smaby. Where'd he go?
I don't know. He may have left the room. Mayor and council, I respectfully make the request that the cable access technician be amended to a full-time position and that we update the job description.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to update the job description for the cable access technician. What this is, we currently have the position filled at 32 hours a week. This would give it a 40-hour week. There's been some things that the city has not been able to fill, and we will be able to hopefully add some additional presence on our social media, but also some additional services for the council and also for the school board. And these funds would come from the cable access fee, and the dollars are in the budget, and we would have to adjust that budget in the future. So with that description, we have a motion to second. Additional discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On the consent item agenda this evening, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of January 16th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of January 22nd, Wilmer Planning Commission minutes of January 17th, application for exempt permit for Wilmerfest Incorporated, application for exempt permit for the Wilmer Junior Golf Foundation, application for exempt permit for Safe Avenues, and an application for exempt permit for Prairie Lakes Chapter of Rocky Mountain Elk, the Civic Center Special Event Liquor License Permit for the novice bond spiel, Civic Center Special Event Liquor License Permit for the Home Show, and the Civic Center Special Event Liquor License Permit for the Spring Home Expo. Also for council's acceptance is the Wilmer Lakes Area Convention Visitors Bureau Board Minutes of November 21st, the Wilmer Community Ad and Rec Joint Powers Board Minutes of January 26th, Human Rights Commission Minutes of December 19th, the Wilmer Community Center Board Minutes of January 10th, monthly building report for January, and the accounts payable report through January 31st, 2018. And for council's information, an application for appointment of Dale Boxer to the Human Rights Commission.
Certain motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve the items as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Fagerly. Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion passes. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak during the open forum that did not get an opportunity to sign up? Seeing and hearing none. The open forum is a privilege that is given to the constituents of our community in our area to address the council on things that are on the council. It is requested that you do so respectfully, that you do so addressing the council, not addressing somebody in the audience. It is here for communication with the council. If you have something to say to somebody other than somebody at the council table, please do that outside of this place. The rules are to be followed. If the rules are not followed, similar to what happened last time, three weeks ago, we can't run a meeting. You know, the job of the council is to do the council's work, and if we're going to be disorderly and not follow rules, then that right will be taken away. And it's not for personal attacks. You're not here to bash somebody or to dig a hole. You're here to do the good work. So if you have something to say to somebody in the audience, say it to them, not at the podium. Again, there's a three-minute limit. And I think I covered everything that we talked about. Okay, so we have 13 people who have signed up. First, we have Lydia Meyer. And then I'll just ask if you live within the community or outside of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lydia Meyer. I do not reside within city limits, but I attend Wilmer High School. Wilmer is my home. I am 16. I cannot vote or run for office. I won't be caucusing tomorrow night, but I believe that everyone has the right to be politically active. I'm here tonight because if I, as a Christian, claim to have a faith that tells me to stand up against injustice when I see it in our community, but I don't, then what does that tell the world about people of faith? What does that tell the world about Wilmer? I'm here because I can't believe that in 2018, we still have to remind people, including some state legislatures, that every citizen has a right to caucus regardless of religion, gender, race, or background. We all have the same rights, even though some in our community are being told that they do not. And I'm here because I believe local leaders should hear from my perspective about leadership. An oath of office is a vow to serve all members of the community, and the Facebook controversy does not reflect this. But even with recent events that have elevated the issue to a state level, I still believe that this is about more than what was shared on social media. Leadership should belong to those who unite the people they lead, not those who encourage divisive narratives. Leadership is not perfection, but leaders should be accountable. We should be able to trust that when someone who claims to be a leader makes a mistake, they will own up to it. We are asking for leaders who listen more and defend their positions less. We are asking for respect and to have leaders that we can respect. And leadership is why a group of individuals came together when we saw something in our town that we couldn't stand behind. It's why we listen to each other and are choosing to say, not only does this matter to our neighbors, but it matters to us, because injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Leadership is why the proposed welcoming resolution is so vital. The resolution helps us all become better and stronger as a community, and it makes a statement to our neighbors. We are doing our best to listen and to advocate for what is important, because we are a community, and that is what communities do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Bob Score.
Bob Score, 617 South West 14th Street. I am a homeowner in Wilmer. Tonight, I come here to ask for the resignation of three people due to the reasons that I feel they are unfit for their positions. First, you, Mayor Calvin. I ask for your resignation due to your lack of not backing all citizens in this town. Asking all citizens to support illegals in this county and this town, taking away citizens' freedom of speech as you did mine and 12 others at the last council meeting, who ventured out in the cold to speak their three minutes of whatever they wanted to talk about. Being one of the main directors behind the separation of one of our city administrators, also, I feel you are a member of the Recall Ron Committee. You gave Bev Dordy a $2,000 cash advance to pay your dues to the Main Street Association when she couldn't find the money to pay for it. Allowing smoking into restricted zones in downtown Wilmer, allowing some of the people in Wilmer to drive without license and insurance, allowing them to mess on our streets, in our stores, and in our hospitals. You are politically motivated for the votes from minorities in this town and have a personal agenda that is not good for Wilmer. That's how I feel. I'm going to ask you for your resignation. Second, I ask for the resignation of our city administrator. I feel that he is not doing his job, just biding his time, looking for another job while being ready for retirement and backing Kelvin times that he shouldn't. Third, I ask the resignation of Sean Mesky, councilmember and member of the Human Rights Commission in Wilmer. His statement calling those who speak up for what they believe in, especially our veterans and myself, the underbelly of Wilmer, is not acceptable by being on a Human Rights Commission. Just who is a Human Rights Commission for? Not all Wilmer rights? You and another person who speaks about this stuff. Everybody's supposed to be the same in this town, but it doesn't work that way? I don't feel you should be on the council. That's my opinion. People ask for Councilman Christensen's resignation. I asked for years. I'm not going to waste anymore time. I've got some stuff to get on, but you know, I'm going to say one thing. Here's a picture of, you ever go to a basketball game and have a favorite place to sit, and then you go to the game and somebody's sitting in your position? Well, there's a person who likes to sit right here, but there's some Somali sitting there. Well, wait a minute. That was you, Mayor Calvin? Are you Islamophobic? Thank you.
Linda Olson.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In 2018, we have a choice to make. Everyone, from ourselves in this room, to our communities and to our elected leaders and our candidates seeking office, we are going to have to decide, will we choose a political or politics of fear and division that allows some politicians to build their power through fear on some imagined other, excuse me, other? Or will we come together to focus on our future and the future of Minnesota? We want all candidates and all parties, instead of focusing on fear and division, to have a conversation that matters. We need a conversation that puts the biggest solutions out there that actually match the crises our families are facing. In Isaiah, which I am a member of, meetings, at our meetings, excuse me, we are hearing about rising insurance and healthcare costs, student debt, concerns about access to quality education for our children, families torn apart because there's no path to full citizenship for hard-working, long-time community members, a rural economy whose wages don't match the needs of families, a desire to age in a place and dignity, and a serious lack of access to affordable and adequate housing. These are real issues that affect so many people in our community. What we need to start talking about tomorrow is what we need to plan on today. We need leaders that are 100% committed to dividing the bridges that divide us. Not silent ones, not neutral ones, but learning and leaning to have hard, fearless conversations that we need to have if we're going to solve the problems in our future. We need elected officials and a political system that is accountable to the real people on real communities. These conversations start tomorrow. In the great Minnesota caucus process, we would like to encourage every person eligible to vote in the 2018 elections to stand and attend your local caucuses. Choose the party that most closely reflects your values and find your caucus's location at the Minnesota Secretary of State website under Caucus Finder Tool. Building bridges begins tonight with passage of this welcoming resolution and continues tomorrow, beginning at 7:00. In locations across our state, we can talk to our neighbors about bringing about real solutions and a hopeful future to our state and community. In doing our talk, in interacting with each other, speaking out, and standing up for what we believe, we are building a future. And if we don't do this, what are we telling our children, and what kind of future will our children have?
Thank you for your comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I didn't catch her name.
Linda Olson.
Linda Olson, thank you.
I'm sorry, I live about two blocks from Spicer, and I taught at Wilmer Public Schools, and my children attended.
Mr. John Burns.
I'm John Burns. I'm a resident of Wilmer. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I speak in favor of the resolution. The resolution really shouldn't be necessary. As Mr. Fagerly has pointed out, we have a big sign out on the highway here that says, "Welcome to Wilmer." However, recent events, which I need not set forth in detail here, would show that maybe we should make some amendments to that sign. The sign might read, "Welcome to Wilmer if you're white. Welcome to Wilmer if you are Northern European extraction. Welcome to Wilmer if you are claimed to be some kind of Christian." Doesn't make any difference what you do with that, preferably fundamentalist. We have to clear that up. It's "Welcome to Wilmer," period. And it's "Welcome to Wilmer" not just to pass through and spend your money, but to settle here and to raise your family here and to get an education here and to work here and to contribute to the economy here. I don't care what your race, creed, national origin is, "Welcome to Wilmer." And we need that resolution because that matter has been put into question by recent events. Let me talk about First Amendment. First Amendment protects the rights of people to say absolutely hateful, disgusting, un-American, un-Christian things. That is protected. It is protected for the neo-Nazis who march through Skokie, Illinois, a suburb of Chicago that has a large Jewish population at the time of this, where many Holocaust survivors there. That right to march through and do things and demonstrate in ways that were just terrible as far as the people, they had a protected right to do that. And so all the hateful speech and so on, they have a protected right. Out of the question. No question. The question is, should we elect people who have those kinds of views and articulate those kinds of views to public office where they supposedly represent all of the people? My answer would be no. But that's up to the people. To our Muslim brothers and sisters, I know that one of the most important prophets in the Quran is Isa. And I don't know whether, you know, if you have an opportunity, you might want to read the words and the examples set forth in the Christian Bible by Isa.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Bratfold.
Thank you. State council members.
Name it if you reside in.
Chris Bratfold, City of Wilmer. I'm here to express my opposition to the resolution declaring Wilmer a welcoming city. Even though I do not, even though I do not support this resolution, I do support immigration and inclusion of all individuals who start a new life here. I wholeheartedly support the notion that Wilmer and all cities for that matter need to be welcoming to people regardless of their origin or religion. I'm not going to stand here and say everything is perfectly fine because it's not. I've read and heard stories about the ways some immigrants have been treated. It's saddening to know that this kind of treatment of others still occurs. Fortunately, though, we have laws in place that punish those who perform these bigoted and hateful actions. However, I would like it to be known that the actions of a few do not represent the majority. I am offended at the notion that the community needs to be admonished by passing a resolution because of the actions of a few. I feel this declaration implies that Wilmer is not already a welcoming city, and that we do not do enough for its immigrant population or for those who practice different religions' views. While, as a whole, we can do more for each other, I have to ask, will what we do ever be enough in the eyes of some? In closing, I believe in actions and not words. The reality is that this resolution does nothing but tell the community that all the hard work and taxes they contribute to support the dreams of others isn't enough. Please stand and support the rest of the community who already do the best they can to help Wilmer be a welcoming city by voting no. Thank you for your time. And also, on a personal note, after I wrote this, my wife works extensively with the Somali community and also works with the disadvantage of this community. And she takes also great offense to what she's been hearing regarding this welcoming city resolution. Her and I live by an inclusion actions in our lives, and we both find it very offensive that those in the community feel that we need to have this done because it's simply not necessary. We do what we can, and we both feel that some in the community don't appreciate what we do already. And so also have to say too, is if those who don't feel that you as leaders do enough, that's what voting's for. So I recommend they take it to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jim Dawkins. Good to see you, Mr. Dawkins.
Nice to see you, Mayor Calvin, and the rest of the council. My name is Jim Dawkins. I'm here tonight to talk about the First Amendment and the perspective of a veteran. As many of you know, I served for 22 years in the United States Air Force. Time after time, the American soldier has answered the call to protect and defend the interests of the United States. Wilmer City Council members and her mayor swear an oath to Americans, soldiers, to defend the principles embodied in the greatest democratic charter the world has ever known, the U.S. Constitution. Every fighting man and woman knowingly accepts the possibility of a supreme sacrifice. Forty million American military have served during periods of war. Nearly 3 million have served in Iraq and Afghanistan. Well over 1 million service personnel have died during wartime. The First Amendment, the founding fathers penned to the Constitution, was freedom of speech. The remainder of the Constitution means nothing without the First Amendment. My fellow veterans and I are appalled at the attacks seen on free speech in Wilmer. In Wilmer lately, during your last council meeting, a dozen citizens braved sub-freezing temperatures on their own time to speak to all of you here, only to be shut down and sent home. Censorship of the open forum violates the basic rights of citizens to petition their government for redress. A longtime council member has been subjected to repeated vicious attacks over free speech for publicly sympathizing with constituents whose opinions some don't like. Wilmer's official newspaper of record has banned and censored citizens who express controversial, dissenting views. Ordinary citizens in Wilmer are regularly tarred and feathered and labeled for opinions that some feel are not politically correct. This is not what our men and women in the military stand for. This kind of behavior is indefensible and outright shameful. Wilmer does have a diversity problem, and that is, too many people refuse to tolerate opinions that are different from their own. How can America stand for free speech around the world when our own people refuse to tolerate free speech at home? Wilmer's veterans.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Sue Quist.
The dictionary defines welcoming as being glad to receive someone. The so-called welcoming resolution you have asked to consider goes far beyond equal opportunity and equal protection under the law. The U.S. Constitution already guarantees equal opportunity. The Minnesota Human Rights Statute already guarantees extraordinary protections for minorities. Government can legislate protection. However, government cannot legislate feelings, attitudes, or emotions. A welcoming feeling is a personal choice, unique to each person's heart. The standard varies with each individual. The key is, we don't have to like everybody of the community. The choice of who we like, who we befriend, who we welcome, is an individual choice that no government can rightly compel. But what bothers me most is that a self-appointed group who considers themselves a welcoming police claims the right to ostracize me if I don't welcome who they welcome. Do you see the irony here? The people promoting the welcoming resolution are the same people who viciously attack Councilman Ron Christensen and his supporters. Why? Because this group doesn't agree with Ron and his like-minded supporters? Therefore, the supporters of the resolution will welcome everyone except for people who don't think like them. The term for this is hypocrisy. This is what Earl Bloom meant when he talked about a brown-shirt thought police. Tonight, you must make a cold, hard look at an inconvenient truth, like it or not. Wilmer's elected government swore an oath to represent everyone in Wilmer, regardless of opinions or political philosophies. You in particular, Mayor Calvin, campaigned on the promise to listen to all the citizens, not just those who voted for you. Our elected government does not have the luxury of only representing taxpayers you agree with. That's a far bigger problem than the welcoming resolution. You are accountable to everyone, whether you like us or not. Endorsing this resolution will serve no other purpose than to deepen a divide that has already grown worse since the last elections. Lastly, the welcoming resolution you are considering is inspired by a national movement called WelcomingCommunities.org. This movement has recruited three cities already from Minnesota, Austin, St. Charles, and Grand Forks, into their network and hopes to make Wilmer its fourth. Here's an excerpt from this group's website. Sanctuary cities desire to resist changes in the law that require law enforcement agencies to enforce immigration laws, from asking people about their immigration status, from using local resources to detain illegal immigrants. We stand and support sanctuary cities. Be very clear, council and citizens, the welcoming resolution is more than a symbolic gesture. If passed, this resolution sets a stage to establish Wilmer as a sanctuary city by a different name. It's a code phrase that proclaims Wilmer's got the welcome hat out for every illegal immigrant and non-assimilating refugee seeking Haven. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Bob Enos.
Mr. Mayor, I have some handouts that could accompany my talking to you if I may.
Give them to the city clerk, please.
I have a request if you would. You know, I haven't been here in a long time, right? I haven't been here for a long time, and the last time I was here, you kind of sliced my time off. Do you remember that? So this is what I'm asking. This is what I'm asking.
Bob, just a minute, please.
Yes, sir.
Can we reset the timer, please?
What I'm asking, sir, is if you would credit my time.
Did you want us to have these first, correct?
Pardon me, please.
You want us to have these first?
It would probably help you. Now, as I was saying, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I wonder if you'd be kind enough to credit me that time that I lost the last time I was here a year ago. With another minute and a half, I could do this better justice, and it's only four and a half minutes.
Three minutes.
Submitted for your consideration on behalf of concerned citizens of Wilmer is what we call the Wilmer First Citizens Compact. Whereas the Wilmer City Council is considering a welcoming resolution, whereas equal opportunity and equal protection under the law are guaranteed by the Constitution, whereas Islamic states include... including the country of Somalia place Sharia law above constitutional law, prohibit the spread of religion other than Islam, endorse unequal private property and inheritance rights for women, permit the physical abuse of female children, and prohibit criticism. Whereas the Refugee Act of 1980 places an unfunded set of burdens upon the city of Wilmer such as affordable housing, health care, education, law enforcement, corrections, and public health. Whereas the Minnesota Office of the Refugee Resettlement determines that refugees pose public health risks, including HIV/AIDS, sexually transmitted diseases, tuberculosis, hepatitis, parasitic disease, and leprosy. Whereas data from the U.S. Office of Refugee Resettlement, the Department of Employment and Economic Development, and the WHO show that East African refugee families in our area substantially live below the federal poverty level with approximately 50% unemployment. Studies for the Center for Immigration studies indicate the same family receives nearly a half million dollars in taxpayer-funded services in a five-year period. Former U.S. Attorney Andrew Lugar described Minnesota as the most fertile recruitment region for potential Islamist terrorists in the United States. Over 12 million immigrants are in the United States who got here through illegal means. And illegal immigration is an absolute affront to every immigrant who has entered or has waited to enter the United States by playing by the numbers. This is what we ask you to resolve. Newcomers, current residents, enjoy equal opportunity and protection under the law. No law supersedes the U.S. Constitution. There's a clear separation between church and state. Newcomers make faithful efforts to assimilate to the American way of life. Newcomers will make all efforts to promptly establish self-sufficiency with unsubsidized living wages placing no burden on the taxpayers. Non-Wilmer government agencies and their contractors are liable for unreasonable economic impact on the town. Residents shall embrace the equal rights of women and protection of children. No protection or sanctuary shall be extended to people who have entered the United States and live in Wilmer unlawfully. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ron Banster. Ron Banster.
Good evening. I got asked to speak at the last moment.
Name in, if you're in the city or not, please.
Ron Branster, Eden Valley, Minnesota. I was asked to come up here. I wasn't planning to speak, but the reason I came here was to listen about this welcoming resolution, which I attended the one in St. Cloud, which became a fiasco, and now you're having it here in St. Joseph is also doing the resolution tonight. Hutchinson just put it down last week. They banned the resolution. Now, what I do outside of my work is I speak on the welcoming cities resolution. I go through a three-state area, and I do this on a weekly basis. I speak to cities, city councils. I ask at you, before you do any type of resolution or even speak on or even vote on this, give me some time to actually sit down with you and explain to you exactly what this resolution means. I'm not sure whether you know where this resolution comes from. It does not come from a feel-good idea. It's not something that just a city comes up and says, hey, you know, this is a good idea. Let's make a resolution, make everybody feel good. That's not where this resolution comes from. This resolution comes from the United Nations. Read about it. Study it. I speak about this in front of hundreds of people at a time, and I plan on coming to Wilmer. And when Wilmer people, the residents of this town, hears where this resolution comes from, it comes from the CGI, Clinton Global Initiative, back in 2013. This isn't something that just came out of the blue and said, hey, let's all feel good. This comes from the United Nations. This comes from Vision 33, Agenda 21. If you pass this, there are things that come behind this, and these people need to understand in this audience, this doesn't just stop here. You've got the mayor's compact that comes behind that, which Sioux Falls just signed on to, which is hate speech, and Hudson, Wisconsin, and six cities in Minnesota just signed on. There's a array of different things that come on. When you pass this, there are things that follow this behind this. Free speech is being taken away. That's the next one they go to. This is originated back in 2013. It starts back in 2005 under House United Resolution 1618. It was passed by the Democrats a day after Christmas in 2015, that they, this whole resolution is designed at a higher level other than you. And unless you understand where it comes from, and when I get out here and I start speaking to Wilmer, and these people start hearing about this and find out what you passed without studying where it comes from, they're going to be furious. Because this isn't just you guys all feeling good and going home and having cookies and cakes and coffee and saying, hey, look, we all feel good. Find out where it comes from. Read about where it comes from. St. Cloud is having a turmoil right now of what they did up there. You've got this happening all over the country right now, all over the world. Australia is involved in this. If the whole world is doing this, why is it-
Thank you for your time. George Hallstram.
I'm going to pass. I've got friends on both sides, and this is my first time, so I'm just going to listen tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, if you're to support-
Name and if you live in town or not.
Pardon?
Name and if you live in town or not.
Don't you have that written there?
Yeah, I do.
Well, okay. Can you read? I'm here first of all to support Ron Christensen. But I can't believe that I'm in a little town in the middle of Minnesota-
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes? What's your point of order?
I believe the gentleman needs to state his name and whether he lives in the community or not.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor of the point of order? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. State your name and address for the record, please. Your name and if you live in town or not.
Jesus. Edward H. Peterson. Yes, I live in Wilmer.
Thank you.
And I repeat again, I'm here in favor of Ron Christensen. We're not in mulled issue here. And yet, the way this newspaper and the collusion of some of you on the council, and mostly the Somalians, think that they own the place, well, they don't. And if there's collusion here, starts with this paper, Musky and the Brain Dead Bear. That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, my name is Mark Fromke. I don't live in Wilmer, but you've seen me enough at these city council meetings, you could probably start to charge me taxes and things. But Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council, I'm here today to speak on behalf of over 1,000 members of the AFL-CIO in your community of Wilmer and even more surrounding it. The AFL-CIO, the unions, we're like any other organization. Not everybody agrees with our positions. But what I want to do here today is to say that this resolution that you will be voting on tonight, to me, representing the AFL-CIO and our members, is a fair resolution. It's a timely resolution and meets the needs of your community. Last time, we kind of went through this, but we only had one speaker because he didn't abide by the time. But you asked the question, what's new, Mr. Mayor? And I just wanted to let you know that in Morehead, Minnesota, there was a resolution similar to this that passed unanimously. In Fargo, right across the border, it passed four to one. Grand Forks, North Dakota, it passed unanimously. And there will be resolutions coming to Dilworth, West Fargo, and East Grand Forks. You know, we're all immigrants at one time. And, you know, I'm a German. And at one time, people said Germans knew nothing. According to my mother, that's still true. But the truth is, we all at one time were not so much welcomed. And at one time, we had difficulties because we dressed different, we spoke a different language, and had different types of religion. But from the first day of Wilmer or any other city, there's always been diversity. And so I'm proud of you today, taking on this resolution and going to pass it. It's the right thing to do at the right time. And as a citizen of Minnesota, representing the AFL-CIO, I want to thank you for your courage. Because it takes courage sometime to do these things. And the last thing I want to say is Martin Luther King, I just listened to the last bit of his "I Had a Dream" speech. And he said, "He fears no man, because the Lord has let him see, you know, the other side of the mountain." And you guys fear nobody passes.
Thank you for your comments.
Name and if you live in the city or not. My name is Peter Wilson. I live in Sartell, Minnesota, outside the city. I have been graciously treated when I have come to this city. I used to sell business insurance to dealerships. I did that about almost 29 years and moved up here from Iowa for John Deere Company in that century. I'm here to say, to urge you to vote no. We talk about different things here, about immigration or assimilation and things. I was at a very, I'd never been to one before, although I've been many places in this country and in the world, and my wife became a citizen in 2016. She came over in 1979 as a refugee from Southeast Asia. So I'm very proud of that. And in looking at it, I don't see it as a matter of race. I see it more as a matter of culture and a matter of costs. I don't think anyone in this room, back here also, is going to be able to sit today and tell me what the impact of this is. If you can, you're more intelligent than me. You go back to the impact of anything, it's rarely known. And sometimes it's unintended consequences, and sometimes it is, it is not perceived where it goes. The initial impact of Medicare was going to be $1 billion a year. Well, it's a lot more than that. It's changed. When you vote for this, if you do, hopefully you don't, you open a door. Though, there are very few people who know where that will end. There are those who know where it's intended to be, and that is not a good place. That is not just hate speech. Put the word "speech" out of your vocabulary. Hate thoughts, hate visions. You go down this road, this is not where you want to be in the future. No one has any idea of what the costs of these places are. The numbers I have seen when you put together the various costs in the St. Cloud area are approaching $4 million a year on interpreters alone. Now that, if you, if those of you who haven't seen that or been aware of it, now I don't know what it would be here because this is a smaller community, but it's huge. Now, that's the cost not only of interpreters for police departments or governmental groups, but it's also for the health providers. All these people are everywhere. Again, hey, maybe there was the equivalent in today's dollars of a quarter million or half a million might be the cost, but who's going to pay that? If any changes are made, those individuals, those entities, companies or firms should be presenting letters of credit to you so you could present to them, hey, it costs me this much to train the police, to train the local government, to train the people at the prisons. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. There was clapping and cheering and stuff, so if some of you did not hear, I thank all of the presenters for presenting. So if you didn't hear me, say thank you. Thank you to everybody who presented tonight. Next, we're going to a consideration of the resolution declaring city, declaring Wilmer as a welcoming community. Mr. Holland. Mr. Meskey.
Meskey's going to address that. Well, I wasn't prepared to present it, but I will answer a few questions in light of what we heard. First one would be, I have no intentions of resigning from the Wilmer City Council for any position that I have made as far as this welcoming committee resolution is concerned, so you can just put that to bed. However, I will be only serving one term on the Wilmer City Council, which I've decided to do long ago. So as you say, the voters can put up with me afterward, or let me go afterwards. I have no intentions of running again. However, as far as this is concerned, the reason that I asked that it be considered is because I'm a strong advocate for free speech, and I have been since this whole process. And I have said it not only here, but at the Human Rights Commission, and I'll say it again. And because the only thing I was hearing for several meetings was Ron Christensen should resign over Facebook liking. And I don't believe that he should, absolutely not. It is his right to say whatever he wishes, and I know there are people that don't want to hear that, but that is what it is. And we had a couple of comments about free speech. They're absolutely accurate. I can't change free speech, but it's a double-edged sword. Those that want to speak against Facebook free speech can do that. And we've entertained that. That's part of the democracy that makes this country great. And so we sit and we will listen to that. When I heard the welcoming resolution, it is the first thing that I had heard in any public forum that was being discussed that wasn't Ron Christensen should resign over Facebook comments, which was refreshing. And I thought, maybe this is something that we could take a look at. On the Human Rights Commission, I had seen a larger resolution that speaks to some fears that I've heard out here today about sanctuary city things and sort of this stuff. And the Human Rights Commission made it very clear, we are not interested in Wilmer of having a sanctuary city. We made it very clear. That never came to a council, but we talked about that. That is not something we want to entertain. And so in light of that, if we're going to preserve free speech, no matter what people are saying, whether you think it's hate speech or not, and we're basically not supporting a sanctuary city, we're taking things that reaffirm, and we've heard it again from speakers tonight, constitutional pieces that are already guaranteed. It's just a reaffirmation of what makes this country great. We weren't talking about trying to do some of these things that people are saying, this is on the horizon. We're just talking about reaffirming what we do. Every time we start these city council meetings, including this evening, we did a pledge of allegiance. We reaffirmed our allegiance to this flag. All this resolution does, in my opinion, is reaffirm our dedication to what makes this country great. And so that is where I sit on this. I hear the fear of what could come, but I think we've addressed actually what those things that could come, we've already addressed them. And so I'll be the one that's sitting, you can call me a fool, if all of a sudden we lose free speech and that we lose the ability to do this, that, and the other thing. But all I looked at is this is a reaffirmation of what we already do in this country. And so that's why I speak in support of it.
So it has been introduced. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were you going to read it? Since it's changed?
It hasn't changed. This is what was originally presented.
Okay, I understood it was because it was longer.
No, it wasn't.
Okay. Well, I speak in opposition to what I mean. We've heard many people tonight give plenty of reason to it, but I had many contacts and phone calls, and I bet I had two people that called and said, we should pass this resolution. And I have to say, there's over two dozen that told me, no, we don't need it in Wilmer, that the time is not right, as somebody says the time is right for this. We affirm our belief in all people through our Constitution and our oath of office to the Constitution, not just the United States Constitution, but the state one and the city charter. Nowhere in there does it say we don't welcome somebody. And Councilman Fagley said it so eloquently, saying, look at the signs when you come into Wilmer. It's welcome to Wilmer. It doesn't say we don't welcome certain people. This resolution isn't necessary. You resolve in your own hearts who you welcome and who- You resolve in your own hearts who you welcome and who you don't. Um, and it's, you're free to introduce this resolution, but I speak against it because of those reasons. And I don't believe that the majority of Wilmer believes that we should pass this resolution. I say this at many council meetings, and I'll say it again. It's easy for us to sit up here and listen to a speaker and be convinced that we should do this, while not thinking about who voted us into office. I listen to those people all the time. And I know I'm conservative, and I have a lot of conservative friends, but a lot of liberal friends call me also, give me their opinions. This resolution is not necessary, folks. You all either welcome people, or you don't. And it's, if you, if you think you, you don't want to welcome some people, that's your freedom. We can't control thoughts. However, it's been tried on me. My freedom of speech has been shrunk. Along with that comes trust. And I, I don't trust this document to do anything for the city of Wilmer. I don't trust it. And trust is the basis of every relationship in your life, marriage, business, church, God. It's trust. And if you don't trust me to welcome you all, it's never gonna happen. The resolution isn't necessary, folks. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm just asking that before we vote, I would like the resolution to be read.
I'll read the resolution.
Thank you. Trying to expand it here so you can actually see it. My bad eye. Whereas the city of Wilmer and the surrounding area is stronger when all community residents are unified, engaged, and valued as both neighbors and contributors to the public good. And whereas in further recognition of the great ideal of equal, equality and freedom as outlined in the United States Constitution and Amendments, and whereas in pursuit of a community in which all residents, without regard to age, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, race, authenticity, ethnicity, religion, or country of origin should be free to pursue life, liberty, and happiness. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Wilmer, as representative of the cit, the city council, as representative of the city of Wilmer, hereby declare and resolve the city of Wilmer to be a welcoming city to all who wish to come and contribute to the public good and future success of this community dated this day, February 5th, February 2018. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Burns did state, you know, we do have some pretty nice welcome to Wilmer signs here. And we are in Minnesota, and we're known for Minnesota nice. We just had a Super Bowl here, and just about everyone loved it. To me, you know, this really sounds great, but Mr. Holland on the radio said, I don't remember what you said, oh, it's symbolic. It's not gonna do anything. So for me, it's like a participation ribbon when you're in preschool or kindergarten. You keep it on your dresser for two weeks, and then you put it in the drawer, and then your mom throws it away. So, I really don't think we need it, so.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I believe that, um, we should consider this, um, resolution. And the reason I believe that is, we have the welcoming sign, and I think that this gives it a little more purpose. It's the same thing that we, we have in our constitution. I think Mr. Christensen, Councilman Christensen mentioned it, it's in our U.S. Constitution. It's in our state constitution. It's trickling down into our city government. What I don't understand, if you're not going to live by it, these words don't mean anything to you. They don't mean anything to you. But if you live by it, it's gonna make you feel good about the community you live in. And I, I believe it's the right thing to do. I look around at our diversity, and I, I look at what we can do together and how we can build together, and what a great community we can have together. We want to welcome everybody to build a stronger fabric. And if we don't do that, we're never gonna be a strong fabric. Uh, so I'm, I'm for the, um, opportunity to vote for this.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would vote in favor of the resolution. Um, I'm also part of Ward Two, as is Mr. Christensen. And I also received a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails in support of the resolution. So to say that a majority of the, either the, our constituents in Ward Two, or the majority of the citizens of Wilmer, I don't believe that's a reflective statement. I also just want to reiterate what Councilmember Plowman brought up at a previous city council meeting, in stating that even though this is a piece of paper, and it does just, if I can paraphrase him, um, it does just go up on a wall or on a shelf, what it does is it sets the tone to the city's leadership. And I like to believe that we are a welcoming community. And that is the message that we do need to send, is that we are a welcoming community. And so, I speak in favor of it. I, I don't, when people, different people have called me, I guess, I don't, to me, it's a no-brainer. It's, it's, why would we not open our arms and our community to people that want to come and work here? We want our, we want our kids to come back and work in this community. We want people to consider moving here and raising their families here and working here, so that we can have doctors and nurses and teachers and mechanics and hairdressers. That doesn't happen if, if we are not a truly welcoming commit, community. And I don't, I don't understand how this got to be a veteran issue. I'm a veteran. Many members on this council are veterans. Our city administrator is a veteran. This has nothing to do with serving our country. This is about being decent. And I think we are a, we're a community that has a lot of churches. How, what do we have, over 30? And if you are Christian, if you are religious, and you live that, you welcome people. And that's what we are in Wilmer. And that's what we represent. And so, I speak in favor of it.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. I agree with Julie. I said it before, it's either in your heart and soul, or it's not there. But if we pass this, what are you gonna do with it? You're not gonna see it every day. You'll probably never see it again. I would prefer if the Human Rights Commission would do a fundraiser and make bookmakers or calendars or something with this saying on, you could see it every day. 'Cause this means nothing as a piece of paper that goes in city files.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, answering, uh, Councilmember Fagerly's question.
Can we speak to the question?
Oh, why don't we print it up? Why don't we print it up and post it?
I've said that for years on the mission statement.
Yes, you have.
Do you see it here? No?
I think we're... Councilmember Nelson.
Hopefully, if we pass this, we will live it. I think that's what Councilmember Plowman said before also. They are words on paper, but I think we need to live those words.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the, of the resolution as presented, signify. I've been saying aye.
Aye.
Goes a poll, same sign? Aye. Did you get it?
I'm sorry, it's a resolution, so I need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
No.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Fagerly.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
The resolution does pass. Next, the consideration of Rockstep Plaza First Edition Preliminary Final Plat. Ms. Anderson.
I'm paused.
No, go ahead. Sarah?
Yep.
Sarah? Just, just wait a minute. You can have that later.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sarah. Um, Ms. Anderson.
Uh, Mayor and members of the council, the city received a plat application, uh, from Rockstep.
Chief Hanson? Can you turn on the mic?
It is on, I think. Is that better?
There, get closer.
All right, there we go.
I couldn't see you, and I didn't know how else to get attention over there, so...
Uh, all right. So the city received a plat application from Rockstep Wilmer, uh, proposing to subdivide an existing parcel, uh, that the Candy Mall is currently built on into two pieces. Uh, the proposed new parcel is where the, the building of the new Starbucks and Aspen Dental are now located. Uh, there is another location map, I believe, that goes with this plat application, um, which should give you a little bit of a better idea. So as I said, the current parcel is, uh, the property that the Candy Mall is built on, um, and the subdivision has been requested to create a separate parcel for taxation purposes. Um, because of the simplicity of this particular plat, we've combined the preliminary and final plat process. Therefore, the staff recommends that the council approves the preliminary and final plat, uh, with the condition that the water and storm sewer agreements, uh, shall be submitted to the city prior to the execution of the final plat hard shells.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of staff. Discussion. Ms. Anderson, I'm not sure if you're aware, does this, uh, affect their, their abatement at all? The tax abatement?
I don't believe so, but I would not have those details at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Holland, if we can get that answer and get it sent out to the council. So we will approve it with the understanding that it does not affect the abatement, if that's okay by council. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes a poll, same sign? That motion does carry. Yes.
Oh, when I was gone.
Yeah. Ms. Anderson, why don't you just introduce yourself? Uh, Councilmember Fagerly was absent at the meeting that you were at, so he was, he was presenting, so...
I'm Sarah Anderson, and took over Megan DeShepper's place as the new city planner.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I think we have you again, which is consideration of an or, an introduction of an ordinance to rezone from general business to high-density multifamily. Ms. Anderson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the, at a planning commission, uh, on January 17th, a public hearing was held to consider a request by the 15th Street Flats LLC to rezone land from general business to R5, which is high-density multifamily residential. Uh, the map is currently displayed. The red box in the middle, uh, is the location of those three parcels. Just south of it is Pizza Ranch. It is a clean transition of densities and uses in that area. Um, and the planning commission has approved a conditional use permit for this property for the development of a new 47-unit, four-story, multifamily residential development. It is staff recommendation that the council move to set the public hearing for this rezoning for the February 20th meeting.
I'll move staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made and seconded to consider introduction of an ordinance, a public hearing for February 20th, uh, at 7:03 PM. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes a poll, same sign? That motion does carry. Next is consideration of a resolution adopting a citizen participation plan and setting a hearing for the 2018 Small Cities Development Program. Ms. Binghamston, from Countyway County City, Wilmer HRA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, before you tonight is a resolution, uh, request to adopt a resolution approving a citizen participation plan and setting a public hearing for February 20th. This is in response to the preliminary application that was submitted to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development in November, requesting, uh, $1,214,145 for a commercial homeowner and rental housing acquisition rehab project. Uh, the project, the commercial rehab project would, um, provide approximately 13 downtown businesses with $40,000 loans, uh, 13 homeowner loans, up to $25,000, and $600,000 for the rental housing acquisition rehab project at Hanson Apartments. Um, the next step in this process is to approve the citizen participation plan, which means we need to hold a public hearing prior to submitting the application. And the resolution attached is, um, defiance what the citizen participation plan would be, which includes the public hearing, providing the information and records at the HRA office, and the HRA would respond, would respond to written comments.
Counsel?
Motion to set the public hearing on February 20th?
Second. Motion made and seconded to set the public hearing. Discussion. Thank you for bringing this to us. It's a nice project, um, and certainly is a need within our community. As we know, there's a great need for housing in our communities. Um, a motion has been made and seconded to set the public hearing for, uh, $1,214,145, $145. Councilmember Nelson.
I don't know if it needs to include the adopting a citizen's participation plan. I think it does, so. I didn't state that, but...
Yes. So consider, consideration of a resolution adopting a citizen participation plan and set the public hearing for a Small Cities Development Program, uh, for February 20th. Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by, roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Fagerly. Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you, Jill. Thanks for coming out and, uh, sticking with us through this, so enjoy the rest of your evening. I hear the Cardinals are playing. Maybe we can get a score, so. Consideration of 2018 Improvement Report. Mr. Christensen, Public Works Director.
I can give you a score first, if you want, Mr. Mayor.
What's the score? As long as they're ahead.
Uh, they were, actually. It was, uh, close at half.
Ooh.
Oh, that was girls. Girls were destroying them. Okay, it's deeper than I thought. Oh, here we go. Forty-two, thirty-eight at halftime.
Forty-two, thirty-eight. Boys are up.
Boys are up.
Yeah. Tough, tough match against the Tech tonight, so...
All right, let me get back to what I was doing here. Mayor, members of the council, tonight is the night, in accordance with Chapter 429 of the Minnesota State Statute, where I deliver the improvement report. And I will summarize, as you have it entire, in its entirety in front of you, I'll summarize what that is. Basically, the streets, the parking lots, the paths that we are either reconstructing or overlaying for the year 2018. The other thing I will be asking tonight, that, uh, the resolution will pass, is to set a public hearing date, so that the public may speak to these streets and these parking lots and these pathways, at which time the council at that point will get to decide, um, whether or not to do all these streets that I'm recommending, or pull some, or add some to that list. The, uh, recommended motion, of course, will be to adopt the resolution, receive any report, which I am about to present, and order a hearing for March 5th at 7:01 PM. You have to do it? All right. Nope, that's correct. Thanks. I'll try to follow along. In front of you, Mayor and members of the council, is a preliminary engineering report. And in summary, summary page, reconstructing streets, so what I'm recommending is Ninth Street Northwest and Park Avenue Northwest is the streets that are up by the Fairgrounds Lift Station, south of the county fairgrounds. Thirteenth, Fourteenth, Fifteenth, and Sixteenth Streets Southeast, which are the, what we call the stub streets from Trot Avenue South. from Trot Avenue South to the field that is currently out of city limits, the Gesh property, or undeveloped, I should say. Sunrise Park Ball Field Parking Lot, and that's an overlay and an expansion of that parking lot off of 23rd. 19th Street Northwest, which is over by West Central Steel, if you recall, that one was on last year's street improvement, and we held off on that because of the construction to West Central Steel. The overlays this year would be 17th Street and Ella Avenue. This was on last year's report as well, and because of funding issues, we didn't do those, do that overlay. And then North Business 71 Path would be from Robins Island to the Co-op Parking Lot. The path itself is in pretty rough shape, and so the plan would be to overlay that as well. Corey, go to about page. Oh, first page, keep going. Next one, there. I won't read through this, mayor and members of the council. If you have questions, I'll stand for questions after this is done. Basically, what this does is introduces the projects as a whole and what the plan will be and how these projects are selected. The points I've made, the highlights I've made in my notes are, they're selected based on a five-year CIP, as well as input from engineering, municipal utility staff, and our Public Works Department. The project areas are identified in Appendix B in your handout, and we'll get to that here in a minute. The scope consists of improvements to reconstruction areas, which would include removal and replacement of streets, curb gutters as needed, ADA improvements on all of the above, installation and a replacement of water main, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and then the overlays are patching, as well as curb gutter, spot curb gutter removal, and then overlay of the entire area. On the streets itself, it's typically under A, proposed improvements there, remove and replace the batuminous surface. The note I have here is consideration will be given, or should be given, to a concrete section in front of, we'll be bidding it separately in front of West Central Steel on 19th because of the weight and the amount of trucks coming in and out of that street. The note, little caveat to that, is it will cost about $80,000 more. That's the potential estimate for that particular street section to do concrete versus batuminous, because that would also include replacing the entire water line, so that we don't have to do that in the near future. It's a 60-year-old water line as we speak. Storm sewer, as you know, is a replacement of catch basins, replacement of lines, adding lines as needed. These are concrete or plastic. The mostly concrete water main is plastic at this time, and we replace all of the older cast, the four-inch or undersized cast iron ductile iron pipe with plastic water lines. Sanitary sewer, same way, we replace as needed, replace the services if they're needed to the property lines, and then connect to the existing services that are there. Overlay areas, we got listed there. Again, we'll do pot-spot patching. If there's soft spots, if there's holes in the, if there's chalk holes in the pavement, we replace those. If there's broken curb and gutters, we replace that. We mill up next to the curb so that it has a smooth transition, and then we put a new surface on the entire street. Funding for all of these consists of a variety of sources. They include local funds, state aid funds, and assessments to the benefited properties. Project costs will be assessed to those properties according to the city's comprehensive assessment policy that has been previously adopted. City must follow the state statute, Chapter 429, as mentioned earlier, to notify property owners and conduct the meetings, and that is, the first step of that is this improvement hearing. Second, of course, is the public hearing for the improvements. This page here is a tentative or proposed schedule for the projects for this year. We're at the top of the list right now, February 5th. If you'll notice, a couple of highlights down through there, the, we're going to advertise for bids near the end of March, open bids near the end of April, and move on with the declaring costs and the assessment hearing, and hoping to get construction going in June of this year to be completed. I've got complete of construction in June of 19, but you'll remember that for the deeper cuts, we paved the final wear course the following year to expose any other soft spots or any other issues we might have. Everything will be substantially complete by the end of October of 18. Based on these findings, mayor and members of the council, the improvements are feasible from an engineering perspective and are practical for meeting the needs of the city. Proposed improvements will benefit adjacent properties in the city of Wilmer by improving existing street and/or utilities within the project areas. It is recommended that projects be constructed as proposed, and its public hearing be held at city council in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 429 of the state of Minnesota statutes. Furthermore, it's recommended that city council approve this report and order the preparation of final plans and specs.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the resolution, receiving the improvements report for the 2018 street improvements and order the improvement hearing for March 5th, 2018 at 7:01 PM.
Motion made and seconded to accept the 2018 improvement report and call for the hearing on March 5th. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I was looking at the map. There's those four little streets that are off from Trot.
Yes.
That's a dead end on all four of those streets. Will they all be done at the same time?
Correct.
Is there any, how will people get in and out, or safety vehicles with that?
Councilmember Nelson, that, of course, will be dependent on the contractor to ensure that the safety vehicles can still access that, and for me to stand here and say that they'll all be done at the same time or separate times, I don't want to do that, but it's one, it'll be bid as one project.
Okay. I have had requests from 12th Street Southwest, from Trot Avenue South, past the Church of the Nazarene, it's pretty busted up, and I know that you guys have been over there trying to patch it for quite some time. Is that in an upcoming plan, or it's just not on there because the road south of it isn't bad enough, or what's the reason for it?
Mayor and members of the council, there are a number of those streets that are, you know, blocks that are bad and blocks that are not. We've done that in the past, where we've gone through and done a couple of blocks at a time. I can't tell you exactly which year that is, but I know that one, there's like 12th and 13th, there's a couple of them in there that are on the radar that are pretty rough shape. 2nd Street Southeast is another one that's in pretty rough shape, and so there's, again, like I've mentioned a number of times, there's probably a mile or a couple of miles of streets in everybody's mind that are in pretty rough shape. So they're on our list, and later on in this report, I've got the PCI pavement condition index ratings for all of these streets that we did this year, or proposed this year. I can look into that and see when 12th Street might come up and how it rates with some of the others.
And then if there's another project that wanted to come forward to get on the improvement hearing, when would they have to get that to you?
Now.
Thank you.
Soon.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Sunrise Ball Park Parking Lot, is that reconstruction and enlarging, or?
Yes.
To the south?
I believe that is the case.
Okay. Might be a little bit low there. You have to build it up because water stands.
Yeah, we've got some, there'll be, obviously, there'll be some drainage improvements done with that as well, because of the water in the area. You know, we got a pathway going through there and some other things, so. I haven't seen, we're not to the final design on that one yet, but yeah, it's, my understanding, it's going to enlarge to the south, and it will take care of the drainage for the parking lot at least.
And that play apparatus that we're looking for a home for, that's going there instead of Boss Park, isn't it?
I have not heard that.
That wasn't added to the motion, was it?
Just planting seeds.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of curling facility. Mr. Christensen, are you doing this one too?
I had not intended to, but I sure can, Mr. Mayor. No. You'll do it? All right. No, sir.
I'm sorry, my list had to call on Sean, so I apologize. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, this is basically, what we're looking tonight is for a motion for myself and the city attorney to enter into, draft a proposed lease agreement with the Glacier Ridge Curling Club Association. Couple of weeks ago, we had a detailed workshop where we talked about the proposal of having a curling facility located here in Wilmer, and that we would like to work with this group. Of course, it's dependent upon a few items, such as an agreement and a lease, and also some fundraising by this group, and I think that it's a crucial first step that we get this out of the way first, so that no one does anything with a misunderstanding of what's expected on each party, the city and the club's behalf. So tonight, I come before you after, we've had this discussion of, as I've said, and would welcome a motion for the city attorney and myself to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to direct staff to work with the Glacier Ridge Curling Club to create a lease agreement, so that they may build a curling facility on the city's property at the Civic Center site.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a curling facility on the Civic Center site. Discussion from council. Seeing and hearing none? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Congratulations, guys. Good work. So, sorry you had to wait so long tonight, but sometimes, you know how it goes, so it's worth waiting for. We, that project is going to be great, and we are really excited to see what you guys are going to put up out there. It's going to be a fabulous building, and thanks for all the work you've put into it up to this point, so go forth and get it done. So, and even before the Olympics start, so. That was the goal, is to be done before the Olympics, or get direction before the Olympics started, so. And for the council, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but both Randy and Suzie are currently in South Korea, and they will be officiating. The only people from the United States officiating in curling, and they came right here from Wilmer, Minnesota, so that's good stuff. That's really good stuff, so. Great thing, so, thank you very much. Next is consideration of Civic Center ice replacement. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor and members of the council, as per the work session last Monday, I have updated your request, council action form, to include an additional option C. So I can go through the report again, or I can give you the two separate options, and then we can discuss the recommendation further. So the option A, of course, again, is the base option. That would be your rebuilding effectively what you have for the two buildings that are currently there. Option B would be refrigeration system that would account for the two buildings that are there, as well as an expanded room for the resurfacer room, to do a snowmelt pit in that room, instead of running the Zamboni outside. Where the changes came between last week and this week are C1 and C2, according to your form. C1 is, which one did I do? I can't remember which one I did here. C1, I believe, is the three-sheet system, three-building system, I should say, with a prep for that third unit at some point in the future. C2 is, as was presented as C last week, so C2 is a full build-out of a system that will accommodate three buildings of ice. One thing I do want to mention, that I've got in my notes here, there was some confusion last week when the word sheet is used. So when hockey, figure skating, those events consider a sheet of ice, it's an entire building of ice, it's one arena, it's one rink. When curlers say a sheet, and I did not know this, it's each lane, so there's five sheets of curling ice in one sheet of hockey ice, just so that we are aware of that, which is why tonight, instead of saying a building or a refrigeration system for three sheets of ice, I'm going to say for three buildings of ice, of which you just approved a third building about five minutes ago. So recommendation tonight, mayor and members of the council, my recommendation has not changed. My recommendation, when at this point, would be C2, which is built for three buildings of ice with the expanded snowmelt pit and the expanded refrigeration system, so a third building of ice could be built in the proximity.
So council, on this one, staff was asked to bring back C1, just as a recap, and what was talked about was that staff was, or council was leaning towards option Project B, which is the two sheets of ice, along with the expanded resurfacer room. So it would be up to council to decide, to make a motion, to decide which of those they'd want to do, unless you wanted to have discussion first. We normally don't do that, but we asked for additional information, which has been brought back to us, which we haven't had a chance to discuss yet, but the, kind of what the direction was at the end of the work session, what would have been optional Project B as in boy, as I remember the conversation. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, my question is really contingent on the first piece of where you're putting this, and my question that I'm going to ask is, we talked about having conventions and other things come here, and if we had a facility that was separated by a fairly substantial, you know, area of green space, is that part of the same footprint? And would we qualify with the footprint of having that extra space from the curling facility during the summer to actually get conventions and stuff want to come here? Because that matters, as far as this is concerned, because this has got to be in close proximity to the other buildings, if we're going to go with Project C2, because they're all going to be off the same ice. Is that not right?
Well, what was talked about was that, in conversations that we had with the curling club after our meeting last, a week ago, was to try to have it either in that A position or the C position, which would put it in close proximity in both of them, then would be able to do whatever the council wished it to do, so.
I wasn't privy to that. If that's the case, I'd be prepared to make the motion to go with Project C2.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Council, is there anybody else that wishes to make a motion?
Can I just ask a question on that?
Certainly.
So basically, what that means then is C2 is really for four sheets of ice?
No.
Well, three sheets.
Three buildings.
Three buildings.
Three buildings.
Three buildings.
And you just approved a third building about five minutes ago.
I know, but the curlers, we didn't approve it that we were, we were doing anything with it. That was, it's for them to raise the money and do something with it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, for Councilmember Mesky's benefit, that the curlers had wanted to do their own ice plant, and, and I don't know, is Kevin still back there? He was there earlier. That's still your desire is to have your own ice plant, correct?
I disagree with that, by the way.
Yeah, staff disagrees with that, and also Stevens Engineering did as well, so. And so that was the reason for that.
So your recommendation is with, with C2 is our ice plant would also work towards the curling facility?
Yes.
Got it.
Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, followed by Schwantes. Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to point out that the refrigeration unit that the curling club is talking about is, what, two and a half, $250,000 perhaps, somewhere in that ballpark? And what we're looking at, if we go with the option which we provide for a third building, is about $400,000, assuming that one day, we would need to build another facility over and above the two ice rinks that we have now, plus a future curling facility. So we could, to spend those dollars today just does not make sense to me. You could replace that refrigeration unit in the curling club facility for less than what we would need to pay today for the additional option to be able to put in future refrigeration. If that makes sense. If that makes sense.
I'm supporting what staff's recommendation was.
If I may clarify one thing to Ms. Schwantus, Mayor. What I'm proposing is not four buildings, and I don't see four buildings happening here for maybe ever. I'm proposing a third building, again, which you've just said could be, most likely will be, a curling facility. What I'm also saying, what I have said all along, is one system, if my staff, if our staff, city staff is maintaining that, is better and more efficient to maintain one system. One refrigeration system will run three different temperatures, if you will, of ice, much like your heating and air conditioning does in your house for three different floors on a house. You can have three different temperatures. It will be, it can be run and has been done all over the state and all over the nation with one system that runs three different buildings of ice. What I'm saying, what I have been proposing all along, is one system, one time, build at once.
Councilmember Nelson and Christensen.
I'm going to make a motion for option B. With that, I know that the curlers' intention is to have their own ice, and I think to maintain that ice also, so I will make the motion for option B.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded for option Project B as in boy. That would give us the ability to have ice for two sheets, and would give us the expanded resurfacer room, which then would give us that melting pit, correct?
That's correct.
Discussion. Councilmember Christensen, did you want to have comments before that?
She stole my thunder.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Mesky.
No.
Plam, Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Six ayes, one noy, nay.
That motion passes as well. I guess that was a simple motion. I thought we were spending money, I thought we had to have a roll call. Consideration of resolution authorizing purchase of portable bleachers. Shaun, is this you or Mr. Brizendine?
Here we are.
Whoever wishes to speak.
Fighting over it.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you, is a proposal to purchase two sets of portable bleachers. This project was funded in the 2018 CIP. Public Works staff, myself and Shaun, have vetted a couple of different proposals that were presented to us. We are proposing to enter into agreement with Seating and Athletic Facility Enterprises for two SPBL 2702 speedy bleachers at a cost of $33,516 for the two units, and an additional $1,250 for delivery, a total of $34,766. $40,000 was in the CIP, as stated. These will be pull-behind Public Works vehicle bleachers. They are fully hydraulic, ease of operation, well-built. Public Works staff was impressed with the presentation that was provided to us short while ago, and we are proposing this purchase.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve purchasing portable bleachers as recommended by staff in the amount of $34,766. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Steve, are you going to be using these on a regular basis, or just stored until you need them? Or will they be out at a ballpark?
Let me get my little document from Mr. Gary Manzer. A short list, it's going to be more than this, but a short list of usages will be about five different events around Wilmer Fest, Rockin' Robins, a variety of youth programs, including youth football and baseball, Celebrate Arts, Stinger Games on multiple nights. They've got more capacity than the bleachers currently at that facility. Dorothy Olsen, pool events, there's a couple of times throughout the year that we bring portable bleachers in. Currently, we've been moving three steel and one aluminum, five high sets of bleachers, and it has really taken its toll on them, as they're not made to be moved all over town. So, as you can see, we've got a plethora of usages for these bleachers, and we think that these are going to be durable and last a long time.
So, they won't have a specific home?
Correct. Yeah, the home's going to be at the Public Works garage and bit ready to hook up to the next event.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a life on these things, Steve? Is it like 10 years, 15 years, or?
These are fairly new, with the new hydraulic systems in it, but we believe they're going to be at least 25-year bleachers.
Sounds good, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
So, looking, Steve, thank you, Mr. Mayor, looking at, so they're 30 feet long and 27 feet wide, is that what I'm understanding? Yeah, that's a very good question. The flyer I've got in front of me didn't have that unit, so I don't, I don't, you're right on the 27, the capacity of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
108, I think, is what the capacity is.
So, top to bottom is 27 feet? No, the other way.
No.
Width, or length, it's 27, it's 27 feet pulling behind the truck. Okay, okay, and then it opens up to, what, 30 feet or 45 feet?
Right, because it's folded in half.
Okay, okay.
And it's got an aisle with a railing system, so from a safety standpoint, it's a much better unit than we're currently using. It meets the current standards of bleachers.
I was just wondering if there were places along, like the parade route, or where they might be used? I was just wondering, other...
All sorts of opportunities, I'm sure.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so, consideration is to authorize a purchase of portable bleachers in the amount of $34,766. A roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. Next, consideration of an agreement with Ingin and Associates for Architectural Services. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, tonight, I've enclosed a draft copy of the contract, and I apologize, it's not complete, but I feel like it's imperative that we go ahead and pass this tonight, or at least to get your approval to pass it, with the condition that myself and the city attorney finish it off, specifically the inclusions about insurance. That's what's been in dispute over the last week, when we've been going back and forth on different drafts. It's not that we're, I guess I shouldn't say dispute, it's just basically, we're trying to come to a mutual understanding on the language between our attorneys. But if we delay this, then it'll be, you know, the 20th of February before I bring it back again. If, we want to make a timeline of getting this project started this year, and so every week matters, and so, again, I repeat, I'd like to have permission tonight, a motion made to approve this contract, with the condition that the city attorney and the city administrator re-approve the insurance provisions within the document.
So, Mr. Scott, that's just provisions within state statute, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. So, you're just hiring a professional service if this resolution passes, so the council knows. The draft contract in your packet has incorporated changes our office made. There are, I believe, two paragraphs that I understand we're going to have to have discussions with the architect or the architects' council about this week, but I think it would be appropriate for the council to approve this contract, you know, in substantial conformity with the draft that's in your packet, subject to final approval by the city administrator and me.
And Mr. Ingin, you don't see any issues or any hangups on those two items?
I'm calling those to arrange.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to enter an agreement with Ingin and Associates for Architectural Services. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I just wanted clarification, it's a long legal document, and looking through it, is this the proposal that you presented to us? I think your proposal was dated in October, so does it follow that same format of community engagement, and that it doesn't have a specific location, and that we will look at, so it follows that, what you had presented last time?
One of the first items, we assume...
I'm Richard Ingin, and I live in the city. One of the first items that we assume, there'd be a building committee appointed, representing city council and staff and users, and it'd be the agency we work with to arrange, to disseminate information and to gather information, and be the representatives for putting the building together.
And so, your question specifically was the public engagement? There's a piece that talks about the public engagement in the document, and there will be public input early on in the process.
That's correct. But there's really a building committee that would, that we'd be working with on a more current basis, and to set up and to guide these meetings.
There's two different buildings, or two, Community Center and City Hall, so they're two separate items as we look at what we need, or?
This is only for the City Hall.
This is just City Hall?
No.
Oh, I thought I read Community Center in there somewhere. Okay.
I don't believe it is in there.
Okay. Okay. This is City Hall. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the time I got to the council packet, I didn't have time to read the 25 pages of this thing. It's quite a long document, and I know this is a section in the scope of architectural, scope of architects' basic services. Where are we at? I mean, we don't know where it's going to go yet, right?
No.
And we don't know what it's going to look like.
No.
So, what is, what are we agreeing to here?
I think the idea, it starts by answering those big questions we talked about before. What is this facility? Where is the facility? When is it built? How much does it cost? We start with a pre-design, answering those big questions. And I think at the council meeting I was at, a few weeks ago, a month ago, I believe there was at least probably three sites that was sort of left on the table, and other sites would be open. So, one of the things, and one of the reasons I think you need a building committee to represent several members of the council and staff and different interests to work with this, is to really go through those, and to make the decision of the site. The first part would be selecting specific sites, and gathering data on those sites, and preparing a simple concept of something worked there, and what are the cost differences on the sites? So, you have some kind of a data to try to make decisions to narrow it to one site.
And at that meeting, I expressed that it's, this is really the preliminary stages of it.
Absolutely.
And I didn't necessarily agree with the sites. I think there's other sites that could be looked at also. I think a couple of the council members thought the same way. So, will we be discussing that again? I mean...
I think, right now, there isn't a site. So, I think the conclusion of the last meeting was, one of the first things to look at will be the various locations, but probably in our study, the first part, one part will be working with staff, developing a program, describing the functioning of the City Hall, not where it is, and a parallel thing will be on a site. Where are the possible sites? And establishing data, so there's some criteria to make a decision on the site. And out of that, out of the first part of the project, the conclusion would be, there's a consensus on the program, the size of the building, what are the areas, what it should be, and where it should be, and a price. And you need answers of all those pieces of information before you can make a decision on a very preliminary basis, that that's what you want to do.
Site location, I mean, it needs to be done before we even engage an architect. I mean, that's, that's my own opinion. I, and we haven't, we discussed it at one meeting.
Right.
You know, and that's it. And we need, we need to have a meeting to look at multiple other sites that could be the location of City Hall. I think we're still in the preliminary stages, is what I'm saying.
We are.
Before we can hire services to tell us, you know, I know that you're going to, you're going to talk to staff and find out how many square feet we need, and how it sits, you had a diagram last time we met, about how you do go about that, but I still think we need, we need a site first to...
Yeah, I think, I think what I remember from the conversation was, is that we wanted to engage an architect, so that we knew about the size of the space that we needed. And then, Councilmember Nelson said it, I think, pretty well, is that, you know, we had the three sites that were in front of us, and then, what she had said at that time, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Councilmember Nelson, but was, we have a whole community, we need to look at the whole community, and then what's the best place for us? But, the key piece of that is starting the process, so you kind of, kind of work these two things side by side, where we work on the site location, and we'll be working on the building layout. And so, the next step would be getting that building committee together, start working on that, and then bringing those community conversations together to talk about what location should it be located in.
And again, this is specifically for a City Hall, it isn't...
Well, there's a couple of different things going back and forth here. I see on page 119, it says City Hall, but then in our, in our car report, it says City Hall and Community Center. So, I think we need to clarify that. I think my understanding was, is that we were looking at the City Hall piece simply at this point, for the architectural services. Is that correct, Mr. Holland?
That was not my understanding.
Okay, well, I'm wrong.
My understanding was to keep...
And I've been wrong before.
Keep all options open. I think that with $8.5 million, that the City Hall is going to consume a majority of that cost. However saying that, when we start looking at all the options, there are some existing buildings that we're considering, and I think that we're looking at some, you know, some different options, and so, that's why I left that on there, and I think that, you know, working with the architect, we'll look at all those options, and we'll come back with some costs and some drawings, and some things for you to consider.
Okay, so, so, I earlier had said that it only was City Hall, and so, I have a mixed-up conversation here that I was thinking about, but it is a City Hall and Community Center, I'm sorry, I didn't, it's in the document, I just didn't read it correctly, so. So, I don't know how that affects what we're talking about now. That makes it a little more blurry. But I think we need to engage the services so that we can start moving forward on this.
Councilmember Osmas.
I think Nelson was first, I'll let her go.
Oh, I called on her once, and that's what went to you.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'll let you run your... Okay.
That'd be a first.
I guess I would see it as it's opening our options, because if we did have, let's say, a large building that could accommodate both, then we have the architect, and we have it in writing that they could develop plans that would work for both. So, I don't see any problem in leaving them both in there.
Councilmember Nelson.
That's the reason I asked the question with what it was we were doing. So, my concern is that we aren't making a decision on a building until we make a decision on what this community needs, and that's both the Community Center and City Hall. So, I do have a concern about not engaging the community in that conversation, in particular with the Community Center, as to what it means to this community, because there's a lot of people thinking about a lot of different things when you talk about a Community Center. So, that's a concern that I have, that we're already not coming together with decisions or a building, but that we are going to engage in a process that allows this community to have some input.
I think that's very important.
Yeah, and your comment was, is you didn't want to engage the community, but what you meant is you wanted to engage the community earlier in the process.
I don't know when I said that, I didn't, that's not what I meant.
I know, that's, that's why I corrected.
I think the community has to help us decide...
The location.
The location.
Right. I knew that's what you meant, that's why I wanted to clarify.
I apologize for whatever I said incorrectly.
Of course, I may have heard it wrong too, because I read it wrong. Councilmember Osmas.
Thank you. I think it goes back to that cart before the horse conversation. Before we could present possibilities to the com- Before we could present possibilities to the community, we need to know if it's a viable option. And so, without the architect being able to say, this, this particular site would accommodate, one, this particular site would accommodate, two, and it opens us up for options. I, we still would be engaging the community. It isn't saying that just because that one building works, that we're incorporating both. I just think we have to have both for options.
So, we have a consideration of an agreement with Ingham and Associates for Architectural Services for city facilities. All in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
I'm confused. I'm going to abstain.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Fernando Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
Motion does pass. The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Next, we have city administrators' comments.
Mayor and council, before you, by your computers, you should have a copy of the Levitt magazine, and Chief Hanson brought those tonight, and there's about four to six pages in there that talk about our fire department and our outstanding employees, and in particular, female employees. And I'm, I just was totally surprised by this article and just very pleased, and, you know, I've expressed to staff that this is the kind of thing that we need to get out more often into the community, a positive piece on the city and talking about our great employees and what they do for this community. So, if you haven't seen a copy, please take that home and take a look at it. The second thing, Mayor, is another item that we've been discussing off and on staff and the police chief and myself in particular, is that this facility here has some security, some fire issues, and has some, you know, practical use issues, and has crowding issues. And I've sent out some resumes, or resumes, some recommendations that I think that we need to move our regular meetings and our work sessions out to the county facility. And so, I would like to throw that out tonight to see if there's some comments. I know that I've talked to a few council people that believe that Chief Felts and Chief Hanson's recommendations should be followed, and so, I throw that out tonight for discussion, if anyone would like to support that, moving our meetings out there in two weeks on the 20th. I would highly recommend that.
Introduce that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move our city council meetings out to the Health and Human Services Building, and then work with the colony to get that all worked out. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we were out there years ago for a couple of years, but I think their equipment, video equipment, needs updating. Is that true?
We're going to have to make some modifications. Right now, it's on tape delay, and so, but we can shoot it, just like we did a month or so ago. It's, that's not a problem, we're recording it, but we need to, if we're going to have it live, we will have to do some modifications. I don't think it's very expensive, though.
But the quality of their pictures isn't...
I don't know, I don't know anything about that.
That might be our expense, then? Update that?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
Yeah, the quality of the pictures not near as good.
No.
Right. I had a lot of complaints when we had our meeting out there. One, that it was time delayed and recorded, and then the other complaint was, is that you could hardly see, hardly make out people that were talking, so. Councilmember Alvarado.
I'm all in favor of, of safety to the council and the members of the public that come into our chambers. I'm hoping as, as we plan for a new city, city office and city council chamber, that we get back here in a timely manner, because I think this is where the city business should be done, is down, downtown and close to the community. So, that's where I'm at. I would go along with it until we can be down here more permanently and safely. Thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe we could have the chief explain the major concerns. I, I don't know if I'm totally sold on it, but he's the one that is concerned, and tell me, tells us why, that the security here isn't, isn't good enough, I guess.
I think one of the things that we want to be careful of is that, I mean, I think the council needs to know the security concerns, and that's been forwarded to us all in an email, and I've talked with the city attorney, that is, privileged and confidential information, what our security plans are, and some of the weaknesses that were identified, it's probably not the best interest of the community or the council to publicly air what our weaknesses are. I mean, when you go to war, you don't tell people that, well, we're not very good at this area, so attack us here, you know? And so, we have to be very careful. I think, chief, if you wanted to give some candid, you know, guarded answers, but, you know, as far as, you know, what our security risks are, that, that, those documents are not to be public. I mean, that's, you know, council received a privileged confidential email that explained that, and I'm talking with the city attorney, that's not public information, so. With that, with those caveats, I would be okay to have the answer, but, you know, we shouldn't be sharing, you know, if someone wanted to make a threat against the council member or the mayor or someone in the community or staff, we shouldn't be sharing that publicly how they could do that.
I'm not disagreeing with, you know, that fact, I'm not, but, I mean, there's a fear factor here. What's the fear? I mean, if anybody in this room, it's probably me who's got the biggest fear. It's, yeah, you laugh.
I've been threatened before.
You talked to Ike about this. The fear factor is, is what? Is it...
Chief, Chief Felts? Can you give a...
Sure. I apologize, I thought Councilmember Nelson wished to speak there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Councilmember Nelson?
I'm, I'm just concerned. We've received confidential emails, and I think it should stay that way, and the fear factor exists for all of us, and I think we should leave that alone and accept that people who are here to protect us have recommended this, and I think we just need to follow that.
I'll buy that.
This is a discussion. Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Mr. Holland?
And that's all I have. I will make arrangements. I've talked to the county administrator, and he said it's not a problem for us to use that facility, as long as I buy him coffee once a month, so I will do that.
All right. It's all under $5. Okay. City administrators' comments, we talked about that. Under mayor's comments, well, I will kind of start off the same way that Councilmember Mesky started out. I have no intentions of resigning, and for those of you that know the presenter, for a lengthy time, he had a recall sign in his front yard saying, "Recall the mayor," so this is nothing new from him. So, you know, when we take a look at what's happening good in our community, there's a lot good happening in our community. And I had an opportunity the last two days to interact with two people that originally were against the welcoming resolution that we ended up, that you as a council and I supported as well tonight. But some of the things that were said on the welcoming resolution was not right. Information was false, and so, we were getting false information out there as far as what we were doing. And, you know, I think as the council, when we get that information that's incorrect, it's our responsibility to say, you know, the document's out there, read the document for what the document says. I received a call from a Star Tribune reporter in regards to this, and she said to me, "Mr. Mayor," she said, you know, "When you look at a lot of the other welcoming resolutions, this is substantially different." And I said, "Yes, it is," but I said, "This is a recommendation that came to us from our community. This is what our community asks us to do." And so, I think we did a good thing. This past month, I've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of people in the community that want great things to happen in Wilmer. We had the Vision 2040 Refresh Event last week. The attendance there, the energy in the room, it was unbelievable. And I just want to reiterate that in the community of Wilmer, within the last year, probably a year and a half, I guess, to be safe, Vision 2040 has invested over $3 million in our community. The Curling Club was here tonight talking about a $2 million investment in our community. Okay? These are community members that want to invest in our community. Now, I know not everybody comes to the table and helps out in these volunteer positions, and not everybody makes a cash donation to these organizations, but, you know, there's people in this community that want to see these good things happening. Folks, if we get this done this year, in the last two and a half years, over $5 million of donations will come into infrastructure in our community, things that we as a council and as the taxpayers don't have to shoulder themselves. So, we have people in this community that are seeing the good things that are happening, and I just thank everybody for being here. I thank you for walking us through what we walked through tonight. Hopefully, in two weeks, we can start refreshed and start off on a new path and do, continue to do good work for the city of Wilmer. So, I'm proud to be the mayor, and I think we have great things going, and I tell you, I was in meetings today, and I tell you, I was so excited. When I came, came home today, my wife said, "Man, you're really pumped up. What's going on?" And I said, you know, I said, "I was in great meetings all day. People wanting to invest in our community, and that's great. It's been a great day, and tonight, a great council meeting. We heard from a lot of people. We have a lot of positive things happening in Wilmer. Get on the bus." Okay, I went there, I went there, I went there. I think I start with you this time, Councilmember Nelson.
The only thing I was just thinking about, comments that you made, but there was a gentleman here tonight who talked about thoughts and visions, but I think we control our thoughts and we control our vision, and I would hope that all of us at the table here would work to make that a positive thought and a positive vision for this community. I think that's a challenge. I think that's what this community is asking us for. I think it's why they wanted to see this council approve the welcome statement, and so, I hope that we will do that.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that diversity isn't only religion, color, creed, who we are. The most important diversity, folks, is diversity of the opinion, opinion, and when we lose that, we lose our freedom of speech. You know, we don't have to like what everybody says, but we need to listen to them. You don't like what I say, it doesn't bother me, but, but at least listen. I listen to you, folks. I listen to some very disturbing messages on my phone from people that I suspect are on your side of the aisle. But on a better note, the Minnesota Vikings aren't the only team that lost to the Super Bowl champions. We can celebrate that together. Everybody have a great week.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to recognize everyone who showed up for the Vision 2040 Refresh Meeting that happened last Tuesday night. It was really exciting, and there was great energy in the room, and we as a community have an option. We can either bemoan and belittle our community and talk about the negative things that are happening, or we can realize what a great place this is to live and the wonderful people that we have. There was great diversity in that room, diversity of all kinds, including diversity of thought, and, and it was a wonderful night and a really fantastic way to celebrate our community. And I don't know about you, but that's what I'm hanging my hat on, is all the good things that have happened in this community and the good things that continue to happen in this community, and I look forward to doing that with my neighbors.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Well, I'm going to be attending a Grow Your Own program tomorrow morning, and I think that's to educate people in, I'm going to learn, growing food so they can move out of poverty, so we'll find out about it. Maybe I'm off, off track there. I'm excited about Friday, or Thursday, the beginning of the Olympics. We start out as individual nations trying to win the gold, but at the end of the day, we're all one. We're one group of people celebrating our, our similarities, and, and, and just because you lose, doesn't mean you lose. So, I remember a swimmer in the Olympics, he was from some country, and he was slow, and it took him forever, but when he got done, he was a champion. And so, I just have to remember that we have to work together. We have a lot of champions. We have a lot of good things happening in our community. We got a lot of talent. We just have to work together, keep on working together, and enjoy the Olympics. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Mesky.
All right. Tonight, I heard some words of wisdom from a 16-year-old Wilmer High School student here, and I'm going to take those to heart. She said, "Leadership is about unity, and leadership is about accountability." And for my part, several weeks ago, there was a meeting here, and I said some comments at the end about the underbelly of the city of Wilmer, which some of those comments were repeated this evening. My intention when I said those things was talking in broad terms about hateful comments that don't allow the furthering of dialogue. That was what I was referencing. However, the next day, on Facebook, I was reminded that those words could be taken as an individual, that they were not worthy, if you will. They are the underbelly. And for those comments, I mean, I could sit and say I exercised free speech, but I will tell you, I believe that if you took that as an individual, that was not unifying, and I'm going to hold that, and I will be accountable for that, and offer personal apologies. I apologized on Facebook, but I didn't apologize to the individuals who may have interpreted that the way that I did not intend it. And so, I do offer personal apologies to Mr. Score, Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Firkness for those comments, and I apologize to the council if that in any way, shape, or form diminished the dialogue that we were having. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Minnesota is great. Wilmer is fabulous. That's all I can say.
Cool, cool. Well, maybe we can still catch the end of that ballgame, so we are adjourned. Motion do adjourn? Second? We're adjourned. Come in.